Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Call will call.
Commissioner Newton.
Hi.
Commissioner Patrick.
Yes, I hear.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Knop.
Yes.
Chair Johnson.
Yes. Are there any corrections to be made on the minutes?
I've got one. On page four or five, fourth paragraph. Part of that, and first one.
Excuse me?
Your first one.
Fourth paragraph.
What did he say?
Oh, I can see why. Makes no sense.
No, makes no sense.
Fourth paragraph on page four.
Four or five, first one.
Oh, okay.
Is you mean to say inconsistent? Rather than in this or consistent?
Are consistent with the code and conditions? Clay, that was your comment.
Was it a question to me, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm just looking through for context. You have that corrected.
I'm asking Clay for confirmation.
You know, I honestly, it might be good to have spelled that.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I actually can check the audio, too.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Okay.
And then on the next paragraph, the last sentence, Adam said, "No, because they cannot exceed 9,000 square feet and are limited to four houses." Are you talking about 9,000 square feet per house? Or what's that about?
On the garage?
Let's see. Bert said he foresees another house going up, and this will be the accessory dwelling attached to it. Adam said, "No," because, yeah, I don't think that's... I would just put that Adam said, "No, this accessory structure is not associated with the 9,000 square feet that are limited to the four houses." Because that's what the conditions say.
Okay, but isn't there also language in there that there's... An accessory building can be only, what, 600 square feet?
No, no. That's only... You'd question that. I don't know if that's in these minutes, but you'd question that.
Right.
And no, that's only if it's within the required yard. And that's where that 600 triggers that.
If it's only within the what?
A required yard.
A required yard.
Yeah, so in other words, if it's in... You have a required set-back yard, 15 feet in the front and backyard. And so if it's in that required front set-back yard, it's limited to 600 square footage unless they get a development permit. They can also get a development permit that could exceed that. But that's that limitation that you're speaking of.
So you can build an accessory dwelling within your setback?
Yes, if you get this development permit.
Up to 600?
Yeah, up to five feet. You can go to five feet.
And it can be that large?
It can be larger, actually, if you get a development permit. Because within that development permit, you can ask for special conditions as part of that.
Wouldn't you need a variance for that?
Yeah, it is. It's a public hearing process.
Okay, so you can't just do it?
No, you just can't do it.
You have to get a variance.
Exactly.
Well, okay, you can get a variance for just about it. You can ask for a variance for almost anything.
Well, there's kind of guidelines, and that's what he's speaking to about that. Because there's, you know, that is that 600 square footage, that's what that's referring to.
I think it was a question about building height.
Yeah, I mean...
That, too.
I mean, I was told that I couldn't build over 12 feet high at that time.
Yeah, and that's part of that as well.
What do you mean that's part of that?
In the required... It's all part of the required yard language. That if you want to build within that required yard, you have to seek a special permit to do that.
But if you want to put an accessory dwelling anywhere else in the property that's not within the setback, you can...
Yeah, yeah, you can exceed that. It's just like a barn or something like that on a residence or something. You know, you can put a big, you know, hangar type of facility if you want. So are we still talking about the minutes and clarifications?
Yeah, we're still talking about that.
Yeah, we can go over that accessory stuff at some other point. But I'm just saying, let's get through this and get to the...
Okay, but then I have one other question on...
Can I come back up just a second? I'm not sure how we correct.
If we answered that, yeah. I had suggested that that's what I was speaking to there is the accessory structure and...
In regard to the height? And I remember that, so I can...
Edison knows, because they cannot exceed 9,000 square feet and are limited to four homes. Because I was speaking to the condition that limits the accessory... Every livable space to 9,000 square feet. And then he talked about accessory structures, and that's not part of that, is what I was trying to say.
Okay, then I had a question. On page three, in the first paragraph, this is about the sixth line down, Adam said he sent the access agreement and conditions under which the building permit was approved to the planning commissioners. We did receive it with building permit.
You did with your last packet.
Yeah.
It was in the last packet.
Oh, I thought this was in reference to the original process, not the now one. Okay, any other corrections?
I just have a point of clarification on page four or five. The paragraph that starts with the State of Dennis says he came in after this happened. He...
Joined the city.
Joined the city, okay.
The PUD.
After the PUD happened.
After the PUD had been approved. So maybe... Should say after the PUD was approved.
Okay.
Not after this happened.
I like that, yeah.
And then he joined the city. It was a city staff number or whatever. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Second. Second. Okay, will call.
Commissioner Patrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Knop.
Yes.
Commissioner Newton.
Yes.
Chair Johnson.
Yes. Okay, next, this is a legislative public hearing regarding the consideration of ZO10 that ought to be the common request to amend the Cannon Beach Municipal Code of the State of Oregon into the new special event chapter or repealing Title 10, Chapter 8, traffic and parking and amending the zoning ordinance in Chapter 4, signage definition, Chapter 22, unlimited commercial zone prohibiting mobile food vending wagons, and Chapter 90, general requirements and regulations on outdoor merchandising. The zoning ordinance text amendment request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, section 17.86.070A amendments criteria. Does anyone affected the planning commission view this matter at this time? Does any commissioner, who is here or she has conflict of interest? Okay, staff report.
Yes, this began back in December of 2018 when a local business owner presented a... Some outdoor merchandising idea really regarding food trucks. And it caused some kind of gray areas to come to light. And so the city council held a work session on December 11, 2018, to give direction on the various areas, including a new permitting process which might form a new events ordinance. The planning commission held joint work sessions with Parks Committee in March, July, September, and October to review the draft language to incorporate changes into the outdoor merchandising within the special events ordinance. And traditionally, events have been handled in our city manager's office in a permit that you come to the city. There's been no really any standards on that, and so that's what we've been going over in our work sessions. Like I said, it really involves a new special events ordinance, but it touches upon some other areas. One of those areas that it touches on is it gets rid of the parade permit because that is incorporated within the special events ordinance. There's a second section, the major... A good majority of what we talk about is outdoor merchandising and sales, and so that it allows for these kind of temporary outdoor events. And part of that is also definitions of what temporary means. And that's also leads into a third section, which is signage. So there's a couple updates to the signage that is also part of that. And then fourth is a brief thing that where food trucks are only prohibited in the C-1 district. That's really the only mention of food trucks in our ordinance. And this would permit that under the special events ordinance. What the special events ordinance out structured is really into a major event, which really, as soon as we hit 50 and above, and it blocks a street or some type of city facility, then that triggers a major event. Automatically, anything over 200 triggers a major city special event. And then you have the minor special event, which are broken down into three different types. And those are for outdoor sales. And then the second type is for a wedding, a festival, and event type of special event. And then the third is a farmer's market. And what we did with that farmer's market was pretty much just take the farmer's market at where it lived, and then put that over into the special events, and it will operate under that or any other special event that might occur. So after our last work session, I also got feedback on the special events ordinance from... Ran that by our department heads and received back some comments from Public Works and incorporated those. And so I'd like to just kind of touch on some of these changes from Public Works. I ran by fire, police, and then the city attorney. And so I'd like to touch on a few of those. That's what this one attachment here that I have given you. We just got it this week from Bill Kabeizman. And his were mainly technical changes, but I'll get to that last, okay? And then we'll go through the two or three questions he did bring up, and I wanted to bring them before you. So from the public works director, I think the main thing from that department, they... We got rid of on page three, any reference to public beaches. We just struck that since that's really the state's jurisdiction. We also kind of tightened up the ordinance in, for example, we changed on the different timing. We wanted a little less window of time after an event and taking down signage or putting up signage, less length of time. And I thought those were great points, and so you'll see that I've incorporated that into the one that you had before you, all of their suggestions. And the reason of that is really is because I think the ordinance that we were working from, the draft, is really built from a larger city, and I don't think we have quite as many probably signage as sign areas and things like that we have to deal with. Let's see, as far as Public Works is also, like I said, they, for instance, on page nine or special event signage, they took... They recommended that we take all those from two days down to 24 hours on some of those are removal of signage, two hours down on section C-2. And then on line 31, also to add a two-hour time limit on that. So pretty much all of theirs were those kind of technical or small shortening of the windows. See if there's any other things.
Jeff?
Yes.
You mentioned line 31 on page nine. Aren't there like 30?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. This was from her draft. Really what we're talking about is... Let me see where we have ones. Yeah, so there should be an E on signs stating no parking toe away.
Okay.
Okay.
Top of it, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm looking back at her hand notes. We also felt for the farmer's market, that review for the minor special event was originally written for me. It would come under my... I changed that. We put it under the public works director since they're the ones that really deal with the one setting it up every week and working with vendors and committee. And I think that was the majority of their changes. I ran that by. I think Joe had had the questions from the police department about the size of the signs and, you know, dangerous of those, you know, limitations on what signs could be made of and the sizes. And he was comfortable with the language that was already in there and said he didn't see any problem with it.
Joe was?
No, the chief was, yeah. And so then I want to just touch on Bill's, which is on this sheet. I've knocked it down because everything else were really technical changes. And so that first one there on page three, where he talks about special events means number three, "Any other activity conducted by a person for common or collective use, purpose, or benefit which involves the use of or has an impact on other public property facilities in provision of public safety." He thought that was rather broad. And so, you know, I would recommend we could strike that because it is covered by other standards, that kind of, those parameters. And then on that next sheet, which is page eight, I just wanted to show you that he had reviewed that insurance indemnification, made some minor technical changes, but nothing really major. And then on the page 12, the last page of code before you, these are the ones that I would like you guys to consider, and your feedback on these would be appreciated. On that one where he says, comment at three, it says, "Some discretion here. How's appropriateness measured?" Now, other jurisdictions, or we could take kind of a proximity or a zoning district type of stance on this. What we, you know, I've seen in other locations and used in other locations, where we could say, instead of just location is appropriate or whatever, we could say either a certain distance, say 300 feet from a residential structure, you could not have a sound device or something like that. Or we could say within a certain distance or adjacent to an R-1, RL, or RVL district. So you could do it by district where it's adjacent to that. And I checked that with all of our park areas and our C-1 areas. Those are mainly adjacent to either R-2 or commercial or other kind of uses, like our main park and everything. So I think if we kept it to those single-family kind of residential districts, those R-1, RL, RVL adjacent to that, that we could strike that kind of broad location appropriate language and just put something like that, some type of language like that. Or, like I said, a distance from a residential structure, which is another thing I've seen. So you guys might want to just think about that, consider that when you're all discussing That next one, the comment four, that's kind of just a technical change. We can make that if we feel it needs to be tightened up. Number five, so someone who in good faith isn't aware of these requirements and holds an event is forever barred, one strike, question mark. And so this is for a major special event permit standard for review, B, says 1C says, "The applicant is in good standing with the city, never having conducted a previously unauthorized event in accordance with the law or outside the terms of a permit or both." In other words, that's really giving one person one strike and then they're... So you guys want to think about that and whether you really wanted to read that strict. And then that next one is, talks about conflict determined, which is D, "The user activity does not conflict with previously planned programs, organizing..." I don't really see a problem with that because what they're talking about is, yeah, if something else is timed at that exact time for that event or that place. I don't know. I'm fine with that, but that's up to you guys. Do you want to have a different language in here or just things like that? So those were my kind of major changes, or not suggested changes, from the staff and the department heads and the city attorney that came across. As far as a recommendation, I didn't put in a recommendation, but with these kind of suggested changes, I would recommend that we continue this to take public comment tonight, continue it, and open public comment again at the next meeting. But give direction to staff on what changes we just kind of went over. If you guys would like to see that in the next draft for the next meeting. Or number two you could do is you could make those changes and condition the, you know, on approval of those changes. So, you know, we're in no rush to get this through the next kind of event season, probably is not till a few months off. So I'm not so concerned, and we have time to take public comments. So it's up to you guys how you want to do it. But I just wanted to give you those kind of two different avenues going forward.
I just have a couple quick... I... Forgive me, I have not really gone over this. I just came back from a trip, so I haven't seen this. But I'm just curious, under definitions...
I want to know, are we... You want me to go ahead and go through the public testimony statement, or are we ready for commissioners to discuss?
Well, she could just have a question. Yeah, question, yeah.
Under the definitions, there's demonstration and expressive activity as two separate things. I'm not sure what the difference is.
I think the demonstration is more of a group activity is what they're trying to... And the others could be a personal kind of...
Like expressive activity, getting up on a soapbox maybe in a park and expounding, and then demonstration would have to have more people?
Yeah, I think demonstrating any formation of procession or assembly of 50 or more people is what they're talking about, so.
Okay, and so I'm not clear, does a demonstration need a permit if it's 50 or more people?
That is a First Amendment kind of question. I'd have to ask Bill that myself. I don't believe it does.
Okay, because I'm concerned about that. You know, because what if you spontaneously organized a demonstration within the city and 55 people showed up?
Those are First Amendment kind of things, so I'd have to be clarification on that.
Can you?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. And then also the other thing I noticed, there's a fee schedule. And is it going to be, like, what's the attitude towards nonprofits? Because we've sort of touched on that before.
Right, and the language in there would be that nonprofits are exempt. We've all discussed that. You guys have made that decision. And when we go to the city council, like I said, those kind of fee structures, that's where we'll start talking about, you know, direction on that. But you guys have made that clear that you guys recommend...
You don't think that should be in the body of this?
Yeah, I think it is. Everyone agrees with that.
Is it page seven where it is?
Yeah, E on... So page, on page eight, line three, "All official city functions and any registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit are exempt from fees."
Okay.
Thanks for testing.
Well, no, I just wanted to see it. I couldn't find it.
Okay.
All right.
The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report listed on that criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan of the municipal code which the person testified, testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue, to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there anyone that would like to make a statement?
I'm Jan Seeporman, P.O., Box 778, Cannon Beach. I just wanted to ask if you would in fact have the public hearing continued to the January meeting, because one week before Christmas is not a real good time for a public hearing of this ordinance. So I just wanted to ask that, please. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to respond?
I'm Jim Ping, I'm the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, P.O., Box 64, 207 North Street. I'll agree with Jan on this. Short notice for us to absorb the entire 22 pages of document is a short time for us to really grasp what all of this is and how it pertains to the five different events. So please extend the comments further so that we have time to really see how this will affect our events. Thank you.
Yeah, the meeting will be continued until January.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners want to chime in on this?
I have a question. On page three, lines 24, 25, 26, and 27, when they're talking about the year's sporting events, the word soccer is not included in that underclass. You probably have more soccer playing here than...
Yeah, we can put that in there.
Are you talking about line 26 and 27?
Yes.
Yeah.
And there might be others, but I just...
Well, I was actually curious why surfing...
Yeah, that'll be struck, too. Yeah.
Yeah.
I just saw that, that's good.
So then would you also strike the other water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean...
I was planning on, but...
Oh, okay. I already struck it. I have another question here on that page, and that is the private property permit. I find, why does somebody on private property need to have a special event permit?
Well, I think it's only for, you know, gatherings of 50 that would cause public, you know, public parking and other kind of concerns like that.
I just find it odd that this is even in there.
It says minor event.
It's a minor event.
Yeah, but that's any, any minor is always over 50 regardless, right? So...
Under 50?
Under.
No, it's over 50.
Minor is under.
Yeah, no, no, it's not. 200 automatically triggers a major. Minor is 50 or more.
That's confusing to me. And I, I mean, I just find the whole wording there from one through five should be eliminated because if there is a problem in a private situation like this, then that's something that the police or the city should take care of, not be issuing a permit. I just find that objectionable.
And if I read this, the very last thing says it's a private property. In the last sentence, "It is not governed by this chapter." Does that mean private events are not governed by this chapter?
Well, you know, it's saying there can be a limit of what we can be responsible for, you know, maintain within a permit. So I think that that's what that speaks to.
So if a minor event is 50 or less, shouldn't that be in the definition of minor event?
So...
On page two?
Yeah, so, you know, I think where we're, what we're concerned with is any event that's 50 or more, right? But now an outdoor sale event or something like that, they're going to want to do that because that's the, that's an extension of kind of the use of the activity, right? To be able to put up signs or do some kind of outdoor sale, right? So that's not really number dependent. What we're concerned with as a city though is whenever 50 or more people are gathered. And so that's where that 50 number is triggered, and that's more of an insurance risk kind of thing. Automatically triggering it into the major event is 200, right? Or some kind of use of a public facility or blockage of the street or access, that triggers, also triggers a major, okay? Is that, is that clear?
The private property permit is completely unclear to me. If I was reading this, just, you know, wanting to have a party at my house for 60 people, I'd be totally confused about what was required. Are you supposed to get a private property permit or not?
Yeah, you are for over 50.
So if you're having a party at your house?
Over 50 people.
Over 50. Why would you have to get a private property permit when it says, if it does not require a use of public property in a manner that impacts or restricts the public's normal and typical use of such property? So why would you need a permit?
That, that's just, that's what, you know, that's the way that, you know, I think we're, we've structured this, but it doesn't mean we have to do that. And I'm just saying that's the way we've, I haven't started thinking this has been in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we may have went over it in that very first, when I had the board, but I don't think we're really going into it that much.
Well, I think, I mean, I really think that... I agree that that's, it should be struck. I mean, in a way it's written, at least unless it was...
Yeah.
Because first of all, it's really, it's written, so it's not clear how it's written.
Sure.
What's intended.
Yeah, and if we want to...
And I don't understand why you would have to have the private property permit if you had 65 people over for a party if you're not impacting any public...
I agree, I agree.
Oh, okay.
Is it possible this is put in?
Okay, thank you. For the record, Bruce Lee, Tennessee manager. I think part of the private event, understand that anything that happens on private property is not really our business. But part of why we do the permitting is to make sure that, you know, from a public standpoint, things are not, folks are not overly inconvenienced. And so if somebody was to come and you say that I'm going to have 60 people at my house, and there's parking for 10 outside, we would probably talk to you about how are you going to handle the parking to make sure that your neighbors and everybody didn't have a problem with that? But if there was, you know, you're close to a major parking lot, something like that, we would look at it and say, "No issues." But if it's, if the event is on private property, but it's somehow going to impact the public property, we would want to know that.
Okay, well, like, for example, let's just take Sandcastle Day for example, which is a non-permitted event.
It is permitted.
Or it is permitted, but it's on the beach.
Yes.
And they're in private property or property, public, and Cannon Beach is completely impacted by that, by parking all over the place.
Right.
So I guess, and that's okay.
No, but in that event, and it's the only event we allow in parking on the beach, to try to minimize the impact, and then also require the applicant to pay for the management of the parking on the beach.
Okay, and but do they pay for the management of the parking on everybody's street and the...
No.
And along Highway 101 and along, all along the main street through town?
No.
Okay.
And neither, you know, with any other event either, you know.
So, okay, so then if you have a, so then if you did have 65 people over to your house, why would you have to get a private property permit? Because when there aren't permits for other public events that happen throughout the town?
But there will be permits for these events, right?
Okay, if they're minor.
Well, that's, but we're still saying that's, that's why this is, this is what we had written this into here for is just this. Okay, so if your neighbor wants a 50, 65 people to come over, you know, it's, we would want the city to know about that if we could help with the parking or how we would manage their parking.
And we would ask them, "How are you going to manage this parking situation?" Because if there's not adequate parking in the area, so we know that people can be parked in front of other people's driveways or in the driveways or that kind of thing, we would say, "Before you move forward with this, we want to make sure that you've got, you know, shuttles or whatever it is, that somehow you have the parking managed."
You know, one of the suggestions I would have, that I think that this private property permit is necessary, I mean, that's why I really, I think I kept it in there and we talked about it earlier. But I think one of the things that could make it more refined is that any, you know, say for a church or for the chamber or whatever, those are assemblies venues. And they're actually signed off with fire department for assembly, right? And so they're very safe to hold that number of people. And so that's kind of what this is speaking to, the dangers of not just parking, but, you know, having that many people in a facility that's not built for that. And so, you know, we can put that, we can refine this language, and I'm glad that we're talking about this, because I think that there should be a refinement on, you know, saying that the chamber and churches and those that are assembly, approved or assembly, that they don't, they're not required to give this at every time. Does that make sense?
Well, I just find it very restrictive, and I think, you know, as the history has been with people having private properties, people that come to that event have to find parking on their own, and so it's, it's a...
Yeah, but I hear parking problems, I mean, that's all I deal with.
I just disagree with the whole wording of those first five lines.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to say that too. Maybe it could be rewritten and so...
Yeah, I'll rewrite it.
Because right now, it, first of all, doesn't even make sense to me because it's saying it doesn't, there's something in here about it doesn't impede the normal or usual, usual traffic regulations or controls. I mean, every event affects parking in the city, everything. A sunny day affects parking.
I can re-graft it.
You're not going to get a permit for a sunny day.
Yeah.
Jeff, broadly, I'm just trying to figure out what this is meant to do, what purpose it has. So if someone were having a garage sale, is this the way the city would regulate garage sales?
No.
No. Okay, what, how are they going to use this? No one wants to stop people from having private parties and private property.
Right.
But what's the purpose of this tool more specifically?
I think it's just what I'd said, if, you know, if you're getting somebody over 50 people and, you know, that's a fire hazard.
Okay, so there's no one event that's tied that you can think of? Okay, so it's just a number of people in a building that isn't...
Structure that's not...
Structurally set up for them.
Yeah, that's my concern, or that's the concern I would have with that.
The liability for that party would fall on the person who owned the house, not the city.
Well, that's...
No, if I have people over at my house and someone gets injured because I have too many people there, I'm the one who gets sued, not the city. But then if you do this and make a city permit part of the deal, then you're opening, the city's opening itself up to liability because they're issuing a permit. I don't understand why you'd want to do that.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'll run some language by Bill, and if he's comfortable with it, he's the one who'd have to sign off on it. Okay, anything else?
So on page four, on 10, "A spontaneous demonstration of 50 people are here that do not involve the use of vehicles, animals, fireworks." I'm just wondering why we have vehicles and animals included in that?
You know, I think that those are, have been found to be, you know, they can be dangerous things. You know, that's why they're included, I mean, that's all I'm saying.
And then on 14, "The chief of police is notified at least 36 hours in advance of commencement of a demonstration." Why would they have to notify the chief of police 36 hours before a demonstration?
That's, usually cities will have that in there so that they can have some kind of protection for those that are demonstrating and doing that. That is, that's typically what you see in these types of ordinances so that, you know, the person demonstrating and the citizens can be, just like Charlottesville, you want to have some type of protection.
That seems excessive. I mean, if I were demonstrating up in the store today, should I have given them 36 hours?
They would like that, yes. And not to say that they'll do that, but that's what we would like to see.
So you're saying that other cities have a 36 hour?
I don't know what specifically, if it's 36 hours and everyone, but yeah, there's usually a timetable to that.
For under 50 people?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little, I'm a bit surprised that other cities, for under 50 people, a demonstration would have to give notice to the police.
Yeah, that's, so that's what that allows the police to come in and say, you know, that you haven't done this, and so that they can, they have the ability to either bear or disperse, yeah.
And then on 17, "Funeral possessions by a licensed mortician." I don't know why you would have a licensed mortician involved with this.
I think we talked about this in...
I know we talked about this before, but it doesn't make any sense to me.
So you're suggesting to take out the licensed part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that, when you scratch the license?
Yeah.
Jeff? Licensed morticians, they're having a funeral procession. They are allowed to go through stop signs, traffic lights, that kind of thing, and the whole group follows them. If you don't have something that says that they've got a special consideration, then, you know, it gets broken and split, and plus anybody could do however they were going to do it. So I would recommend, I mean, I don't know if we have a mortician.
Yeah, I think that's what was brought up at the work session, was that they're...
You don't even have a traffic light.
We don't know one, yeah.
There's no traffic lights in Cannon Beach.
But even the stop signs, they move their stop signs or whatever, and the whole group stays together. So they do have, they do have the exception. That makes sense.
So that's a good one. Do they have, do they have to notify the police department? I mean, would...
They do, and usually most jurisdictions will notify us, yeah. So leave it or strike it?
I think there's a recent court, I think it needs to be left here.
Okay. I don't see we're going to have too many, but whatever. Leave it, okay. Next, strike it.
So then on page seven, on 10, "Provision for first aid and emergency medical services." Isn't that the responsibility of the city rather than private people?
Not, not to arrange for that with the city usually, yeah, they will, they will...
I mean, there's not, we don't have, we don't have first aid or emergency medical services for the farmer's market.
Yeah, but that's not a major event.
But that's, sure it's a major event.
It's not a...
At the farmer's market, there has been people that, you know, have been injured and we called the party. They're part of the call party.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying, yes, this makes it sound like you have, you have people that are medically trained that you hired to take care of this rather than calling 911. That's what I'm saying, that doesn't make...
We thought we said plan for first aid and emergency. What's that? What if we use the word plan as the provision?
Instead of provisions, plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then on page nine, on 11, "The committee may post a maximum of eight signs that promote the event at that location." I wonder how we came up with eight signs. To me, that seems terribly excessive.
You know, I just, I think it probably has to do with direction, you know, the different sides of an event. So, you know, four to eight is what I'm trying to say, it's probably two per side.
You probably wouldn't be able to see the event if you had eight signs out there.
Well, it's never going to exceed 16 square feet in sign area, right?
What's that?
It's never going to exceed 16 square feet in sign area.
Well, down below on 30, each venue sign and/or banner shall be less than 50 square feet of sign area. So you're talking about...
I'm saying each sign is not going to be larger than that 16 square feet in sign area.
16 or, or mine 30, 50 square feet?
Yeah, for the banner.
No, explain, explain what you're saying, sign or banner?
So each venue sign and/or banner should be less than 50 square feet of sign area. So you're limiting, so each sign is limited to 16, but the total's 50. Do you know what I'm saying?
The total of if you have eight...
All signs, yeah.
If you have eight, then the total would...
Yeah, you can have one at 16, but the rest have got to be... Yeah, you can have one at sixteen, but the rest have got to be the remainder of that, yeah.
Well, yeah, then you should say something about total, the total.
Okay, total, total square feet, okay.
And then on page ten, on line ten, I'm, this meeting must be held not more than hundred and eighty days prior, or less than eighty days prior to a special event. That seems terribly excessive in terms of distance out and distance from. A hundred and eighty days?
Six months.
On line ten.
Or two and a half months, six, that's six months, two and a half months.
I don't know, I just think, find that that's excessive.
I think we've changed it a couple of times. Do you guys have what you want?
Well, I think it's a hundred and eighty days prior seems excessive to me, but I don't know, anybody else?
Well, it's not more than a hundred and eighty, but I think less than eighty days is, to me, that's...
I'm saying you can apply up to six months before the event.
Right.
But you gotta apply at least two and a half months.
Yeah, I, I think the two and a half, I think the two and a half months is, 'cause you, you can't always know what, you know, I would say, matter of that.
This is a major event, though, so, so that's what I'm worried about with, so two? Knock it down to sixty?
Sixty, at least better. Seems like this whole thing is designed for the city being huge.
Yeah, yeah.
Growing and growing, I mean, this is, this is a, this is, you know, events ordinance for a much larger city than our city. And, and that's, I guess that's what, that's why I feel queasy about it, 'cause it seems like it's designed for, you know, to seeing the city grow, grow, and grow.
Well, I...
And, and I think that's...
I don't think that's true. I mean, I've worked in other cities, and they're about, they're very similar to this, if not the exact same thing. Only thing different is ours has a few, you know, those minor ones are more specific for us, so, but the major one is pretty much the same as most cities you'll see, that, that's what they wanna see in a major event ordinance. Sure.
So then on page eleven, line nineteen, one special inflatable or a collection of inflatables for other temporary signs not exceeding five hundred cubic feet may be conditionally approved. Five hundred cubic feet? I mean, that, here again, that seems totally out of proportion to what should...
That's, that's not that big, really, but, you know, if you do the math on that, you know...
It's, it is big. Is it one of those things, boring?
No, no, it's actually, I've tried to kind of source it on the ones that they put up at the candy store and stuff, you know, so that those kind of signs, signs are permitted, you know, that's how they would permit those. No, it's no dancing, we're not gonna, you know, allow dancing.
No floppy guys?
Floppy guys, not gonna happen, no. And I can be more specific to eliminate floppy guys, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, and then on, on page eleven, line twenty-eight, all events are limited to normal posted business hours. I don't know what that means, posted, normal hours.
Whatever that business is posted for their business hours.
This, you're making it sound like a business is doing a special event, where, whereas if there's somebody that's not, doesn't have a business and doing a special event, that doesn't make, that bridge doesn't make any sense.
Okay, what we could do is put, a good point, we could just put either posted business hours or, you know, and put a deferred, deferred time.
Well, you, you had language in here someplace about starting an event at seven AM and then at ten.
That is the, that's seven to ten, and that's taken directly to match our noise ordinance, so that's why I put that in there. So that's not what we're talking about in normal business hours, though, unless you wanna defer to that as our normal business hours. I don't think so.
And then on, on line twenty-nine, one county health department approves a, a food cart or truck may operate under a cannabis business license. And so why are you limiting that to just one food cart?
Because that's what, during the work session discussion, that's what we had kind of talked about, to start with one and then...
Well, I, I wouldn't limit it to one food cart if it had a special event.
Okay.
I think there should be options on that.
How does everyone else feel about that?
They don't seem to be concerned.
For a special event?
Yeah.
A major event?
Well, this is for minor.
Okay, for minor?
Yeah, just a minor.
So for a minor event, you can have one food truck, it has to have a health...
Yeah.
And a cannabis license.
It's limited on the amount of time, it can be their hours.
Yeah.
I don't understand why they, you know, only one that...
Okay. Is there a number, though, that you wanna see?
Minor, minor event is fifty people.
Yeah, fifty people.
Could be more than one food truck for fifty people.
Well, maybe you have a vegetarian food truck and a non-vegetarian food, I mean, you know what I mean?
Right.
One, or, I don't see how you can have, you can, you can service all the people at an event with one food truck, unless it's multi-ethnic, multi-purpose, multi-arena. I mean, if you're gonna have a food truck at all, then I don't see why it has to be one.
Okay, I'll just put county health department approved.
It's limited for the amount of time, you can't sit there for weeks, if you just sit there for seventy-two hours, it's...
Okay.
Yeah.
So you'd strike word one and just make sure they have a health license on it?
And then on twelve, I think we talked about this a little bit earlier, but on line thirteen and fourteen, the applicant is in good standing of the city, never having conducted a previously unauthorized event in accordance with the law or, or outside the terms of the permit, I think that whole thing should be struck.
Yeah.
Well, that's what Bill said.
What's that?
That was the comment Bill made, it deserved comments, and he thought that was too, you know, that was like one striking route.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So have we agreed that that's gonna be eliminated? Yeah.
Yes.
Are we gonna move to the Bill's comments? I'm thinking about...
Well, that was one.
So there's, I guess this was initially put in here just to stop people who aren't behaving, who have behaved in the past, it seems like we ought to talk about some sort of language that protects the intention, but isn't...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what you're trying to argue, but I do think the concept of, you know, to have some control over bad actors.
I can, I can see if there's, you know, some alternative language that Bill might suggest there, and just bring that back, and you guys can then, you know, at the next hearing, you can decide if you want...
There's enough, there's enough other conditions in here, I think, to satisfy giving someone a permit, they can only, you know, I mean, it has to be full, fully completed, it has to have no material falsehoods or misrepresentations, it can't conflict with other programs, there's so many different restrictions in here that have to be met in order to get a permit, I don't see why, you also have to have one that says if you were bad before, you can't get one, I mean...
But you could have language that said, you know, if there's, there were issues with an event, your previous event, that may be grounds for...
Yeah.
Not moving it, something like, I mean, I think Bill could do that better.
Just like that, yeah.
'Cause they...
Okay, I'll just bring something back, and you guys can discuss that at the next
You're in good standing with the city?
one. Yeah.
But what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like it's out of place.
Okay.
That whole thing.
What's that?
That, that whole...
Yeah. And then on page thirteen, on six, a special event will not create an imminent possibility of violent disorder, disorderly conduct likely to endanger public safety, health, and welfare or the result of property damage. I, I just find that like, okay, why is that in there? If you're, if you're a violent person, you'd be calling the police. I, I mean, that, that to me doesn't make any sense. It's, it's like you're, you're trying to find fault with people. And then right above that, on three, I think we talked about that the last time, a special event will not require the exclusive use of a park area during the period in which, in a manner which will not adverse impact the reasonable use or access to the area of general public. So did we ever get to a point where they, they can have a permit use other than the stage and the city park?
Yeah.
So is, that would have an impact on, on a vet?
Yeah.
So it seems to me if you're going to have a special event in these other parks, you would, you, you would have an area that you could use rather than, you know, exclusively, you know, have, either having the, the whole park or not having the whole park. I mean, you know, we would have a wedding permit in Rose Garden, people could still go through there.
Yeah.
But they, they weren't restricted.
So are you saying, so...
Well, I'm saying if somebody has a special permit to use a park other than the van stand, this would basically exclude people from using parts of that park. I mean, I, I've always thought that there should be an area that they know that they can use if they were going to have a special event.
Yeah, right, yeah, so you're saying this does kind of, it sounds like we're kind of, yeah, eliminating that.
Yeah, building.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we definitely would...
And then on, on page fifteen, eight, conditions or restrictions on the use of alcoholic beverages and authorization for the condition of exclusive control or regulation on vendors and related sales activity by the committee during the special event. I don't quite understand what that, that means, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Just that we will have control over alcohol use in, in an event.
Should I put O L C C? O L C C?
Yeah, yeah, but, but we would, in other words, we would require that before we would...
Well, why shouldn't it just say instead, an O L C C, the permit is required?
Yeah, exactly, for any alcohol use.
It makes it sound like you're adding extra steps, you know?
And then further down on the same page, twenty-one, on violations, violations of the terms and conditions of any of the following prohibitions in the chapter will constitute a misdemeanor punishable to a fine of up to one thousand dollars or imprisonment in county jail for a term not exceeding six months for both.
That's, that is mine.
Are you, are you trying these people for murder, or what are you trying to say?
That's a misdemeanor, that, that is what a misdemeanor is. A misdemeanor is a fine of two thousand dollars or prison, so it's either gonna be a misdemeanor or it's not.
Well, this, I still find that excessive.
What do you think, because what you're saying is that you don't think it should be punishable, misdemeanor?
Well, no, it could be a fine, but imprisonment in county jail seems, seems totally out...
No, but that, I'm just saying, that, you can't change what a misdemeanor is, that is what a misdemeanor is, so you say that it can't, it isn't a misdemeanor, that's the only other choice, 'cause that is a misdemeanor. So it's either gonna be one, or it's not. We can't, it, it would have missed, that, that's what it is.
That's, that's in statute, that's statute.
So, so I'm just saying that you, you have to determine that you don't want it to be misdemeanor.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if you do or not.
So can we go back to, you guys, we talked about Bill, Bill's other thing, the one that I brought up on page, let me see where it is in Mr. Virgin, about the proximity of the sound amplifying thing, where that's appropriate for music and stuff. I had suggested two different kind of versions on that.
I like the residential one better.
The kind of by district type of thing?
No, distance from residential structure, I think that's much better, it's starting to go into all the zones and...
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I'm just trying to get through here, I think I can, I like kind of how keep in the language you had, but in no case, but in no case, closer than...
Okay, okay. Okay.
So then on page nineteen, on two, building frontage means an exterior building facing, a building wall facing a street, a parking lot, or a pedestrian walkway. To me, that doesn't, I think it should say, building frontage means an exterior building wall, and leave off the rest of that.
Well, just an exterior building wall is not a frontage of...
Well, a frontage may not, may not be on a street, it may not be on a parking lot, it may not...
Yeah, but that's what that term means, building frontage means the one that fronts the street, so the one that we're, we're regulating, yeah.
And, and then down below on thirteen, the law sign means a temporary freestanding sign made of rigid materials.
Yeah, it's not, it's not my favorite either.
Yeah, I would say.
I, I honestly, let me just briefly discuss this, okay? I did not go into our signage ordinance with an idea to review, redo the signage. I only corrected the ones that, that's why you're only seeing temporary signage affected and U window sign effect. So anything that might involve this kind, or be touched by this outdoor merchandising, I, I think if we go into the redoing the entire signage ordinance, that's a separate ordinance, and we have to abide by the zoning, you know, notice and all that with that. I, I don't wanna do that. These just are ones that often come up with outdoor merchandising and banners and things like that, and I wanted to clarify, temporary signs and window signs are not those, is what I was trying to say in that. So that's, I didn't wanna touch any of the rest, but I, I do think we do need to touch the signage ordinance fairly soon, so...
Well, I'm just stating what doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
And so then on, on twenty, on line fourteen, drive-in restaurants or mobile food restaurants, and then you struck out for mobile food vending wagons. So I'm not really sure why the, that was struck out of there.
Well, there's two ways we can handle it, we can keep it in there, or we can, but if we keep it in there, we're gonna keep it with or-mobile food vending wagons when, under a special events permit, okay? Special events permit, sorry. Or just strike that, you know, and then that would allow us, when these C-one districts want to have that food truck during a special event, we don't even have to bother about going that route. But it, you know, I could put just the clarification on that, and we can do that. But it, you know, I could put just the clarification on that and we can do that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's all I have. Unless you want me to go back over some of this.
I think they're, they're great points I brought to you, you did that, you know? It brings up some questions that, you know, maybe are uncomfortable and, you know, we don't like to think about in a small town like Kansas, but the world is changing. In particular, I was really thinking about, on page thirteen, line one, the user activity does not present unreasonable danger to the health or safety of the applicant.
What line, what line are you on?
Uh, line one, it's L. And I, I was trying to go through my mind where that would play out, okay? Well, if someone wants to run down the street with no candles, okay, that's going to be dangerous to themselves and others. Proud Boys wants to come, and that represents a different kind of danger and also some constitutional questions. There's sorts of things that, you know, we want to be careful about when, when addressing this language, you know, we've thought about it from a couple of different perspectives. I don't have the answer on that, but I do think that particular line and a couple of issues got to get, to get you thinking about it.
For sure.
So, I guess the answer for the step to do that when that comes to us and have some tools to address it.
Any, any other comments by the commissioners?
Chef, you had also asked on Bill's comments to talk about the items on line twenty-two and line twenty-four. We did talk about twenty-two.
I don't know what page are you on?
Uh, this is the, the handout.
Oh, the print on the handouts, Susan.
It's pretty cool.
I thought we addressed all of them.
I think we did, yeah.
We addressed all of them.
Yeah.
Did we touch on conflict?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, any, any other comments? Any additional testimony? Okay, this, this agenda item will be continued until January. And then moving on, any comments on the tree?
What, what is that date, Joe, on that January?
The twenty-third.
Okay, thank you. Continued January twenty-third.
Okay, any, any comments on the tree report? And the Nicholson Plan Development Access easement authority, that was continued to the City Council?
Yes, yeah.
Well, wait a minute. I just, we, we're not going to discuss it or?
Yeah, I would. Yeah. For the record, Bruce St. Dennis City Manager, the last workshop, council directed staff to look into the permitting of the garage on Nicholson, within the Nicholson P U D. And the City Council is the appropriate body to provide that sort of direction to the City Manager to review that sort of an action. And so, we will be providing that report probably to the council around January seventh or shortly after, for them to discuss on the fourteenth, and we will be providing you with a copy of that report.
Can I just make a comment about this? If a mistake was made, I think that everyone would appreciate that a mistake is admitted if one is made rather than trying to cover up a bunch of stuff. I mean, I, I, I'm just, I'm saying that because that is the feeling that, that is the general feeling I'm getting from people, and it's very disturbing to me. It's like, if someone made a mistake, that's okay. People make mistakes and they can fix, but that, to just pretend that this is all cool and that it was all cool all along, when it really obviously wasn't, is, is really disturbing.
Okay, if I may respond, I think that you, that you're coming to a conclusion that there's some sort of cover-up and that we are doing something wrong. I, I don't agree with that. We will go ahead and if somebody made a mistake, we will deal with that. But what we're finding is that there are statements being made, and the situation is a lot more complicated than it seems. For example, when the applicant came to Jeff, he had a copy of the conditions for the Nicholson property, okay? Jeff wisely checked those, went to the file where the conditions should be, found they were different. And then in a subsequent conversation with Bill Kabeisman, talking about the conditions that Jeff had found in the file, he said, "That doesn't sound right. Let's look at the Lubbock file." And those conditions were different. So, and working through, and then also, we found that there were conditions, that a discussion that occurred at the Planning Commission, and then there were multiple iterations at the city for certain things. There were discussions, I'm sorry, there were agreements, private agreements, you know, as far as easements and other things, which the city was not a party to. And there are, and I don't know what the document looked like when it left the Planning Commission, but there are things in there that talk about accessory structures and other things. So, we want to look all the way through with this, and we also want to be cautious because there's a lot of statements that are being made that, and, you know, there's, there is potential for, you know, this ending up in the lawsuit. So, we want to protect the city as much as we can, make sure that we've gone through the proper process, and that no statements can be attributed to the city that were not accurate. And so, we want to go through the process and, and we'll provide the information. I mean, it's not my way to try to cover anything up. If there was a mistake, it was a mistake. I can see that there's an awful lot of components in this and the way that it was done that I don't, I'm not sure exactly where to look for anything. So, so I'm, I'm looking at what was available at the time, that sort of thing.
And I, I don't think, I didn't mean to imply that I'm saying that everyone thinks that the city is covering it up. I think what I'm talking about is, is that Nicholson did a lot of things that were sneaky and not above board and may have been, I have no idea about what the harden, harden is, is at all. I have no idea, actually. All I'm saying is, is that, that people want answers. Because that whole thing with the Nicholson thing was very contentious to begin with. He came in here with two lawyers and two people.
If I can, if I can, if I can, no, if I, just to try to keep comments that might hurt us later out of the record is why I'm trying to simplify this. I understand the, you know, the high feelings and all, but I'm just suggesting that making those kind of comments in this meeting are not necessarily in the citizen's.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about libel and slander, they have to, those don't even count unless you have a malicious intent. So, and if you're asking questions, neither of those subjects you to litigation just by asking questions. I know that to be true.
Right, but I think so. A concern that I always had with the board is that you are protected as long as you are operating within the guidelines. And if someone can say, "You went out of bounds on this," then our ability to protect may not be there. So, I'm always just trying to be protective of the board members. So, but we will, we will get to where you want to be. It's just going to, it's just going to take a little bit more time, and again, when we, we look at the record, we're not even sure if we're, we got to the record yet, because there's always something else that seems to change. But that's all that we have.
And I know you're trying, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I want to second that. I, it's a very complicated, very, it was a very contentious issue. Appreciate your stepping into this to try to come to some understanding of what happened and try to make sure the right thing was done. I think at that point, that's what we can ask.
Right, and what we're finding is there's a lot of things that we need to fix, because just when I can make a statement and maybe it's habitable space, there's not really, I can say that that's habitable space. Well, I can go out here and sleep on the picnic table, that's habitable space. We don't have good enough definitions for a lot of the things that we use in common vernacular, and so somebody might say that that's what's there. Well, we don't necessarily have something that can deal with that.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
And, and there are also some, just some things that, you know, like the idea that the structure is somehow being built so that you can have a unit or something upstairs. Well, we have, I know that there was something in the permit that said something along the lines, but Jeff and Alton had gone in and said, "You can't condition the space and you can't have a stairway." And so, some of the things that would be required for what people are saying or occurring in there, we've been in the building, and those things, those things are not there. Not saying they couldn't be put in later, but seeing that that was coming, we documented and said, "You can't do this and you can't do this." So, trying to make sure that people don't, the things that are being said are being done there, we're not seeing that, and we do have the ability to go in. Doesn't mean it can't change. Okay?
Thank you for your reference.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Oh, sure, yeah. And let, let's all try to get those in behind us.
I just want to add one thing, and I think it's an important thing, and to speak generally, it's not about this, it, it probably is not about this specific situation. But I think it's important that people feel like there is a process in place, and that process is going to be held to regardless of any threat from someone saying, "We're not getting our way, therefore we want to go in another direction." And I think in general, if people feel like the city stands behind those decisions and, again, not to the conversation tonight, but in the past, there are a couple where there's a sentiment that the city bowed, and they don't want to see that. And if we can show them, as this body or the council or in any of our different roles, we can show them, hey, to your point, yes, mistakes were made, we're going to correct them and feature them in these places, and there's some productive steps. But also, a very thoughtful analysis of any current situations that you're reviewing and how we might move forward so that people feel like, yes, people make mistakes, but we're going to stand by a certain policy. I think that will go a lot, along with some people who are discontented right now, and that is, okay, if you want a, a more general kind of street baller theme might be, if you want to take a punch at us, we've got our rules, and too bad, people want to see that.
And that's exactly what, what, what we want to do. I mean, there's, there's two levels. There's like at the staff level where we're going to go ahead and try to say, "This is what happened and these are the conclusions." Then there's also a political level, which is, which is sometimes harder. You know, I, I always say, policy is much harder than operations.
Yeah.
So, but from, from our side, it's, it's going to be factually driven, and we'll just see where it leads us.
Okay, appreciate it.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Policy, the political side, hats off. I know that's.
Yeah, won't go there. Okay, thank you.
So, the other thing that I, I want to remind people of is that in the whole Nicholson Plan Development process, the Planning Commission, I think, voted down, I think unanimously almost every one of those proposals, our decisions were overturned by City Council. I just...
I, I would say that, I believe basically that's true without knowing all the specifics, but I think that that was kind of a huddle. I would agree with that.
Okay. Ongoing planning items?
Well, we have a, a lot of ongoing planning items, but the, the main ones right now is the special events ordinance, which will go forward. The City Council has pushed back the, well, the four dunes coming up in February, so they're asking for the four dune management plan revision, a revision to that plan. So, we've been working on that. We also have the transportation grant that will work on the draft for, the scope of work for that. That will be going out in the spring.
So, is that going to be coming up soon to, for us?
The transportation?
Yep.
Well, that, that plan will kick off, we'll get the request for proposal out in the spring. We won't really start on that kind of plan work in working with you guys for, oh, probably about another six months until we get into that. Then we also have, let's see, what is the other one? Yeah, I can't remember what the other one is, but we don't have one else. So, yeah, I don't know what the other ones were. But we have, you know, quite a few other things going on with Design Review Board, going to be starting this month to look at the design review criteria and possibly going into that, and signage is a part of that. And so, they may start that first look at that, and we're going to get direction from them at this, at Thursday night's meeting. So, we've got quite a few things in the coming up.
Okay. Good of the order.
Diane Amos, Coast Office on 494 Cannon Beach. Jeff Harrison asked me to read a prepared statement that he's made. It's four pages long, and it does regard the Nicholson Plan Unit Development. He is very sorry he couldn't be here to, to present this himself, but he has to be home with his wife who's having chemotherapy. He says, "Good evening. I am writing to you on behalf of myself and my wife, Jennifer Harrison. Our mailing address is P O S Box 742 Cannon Beach. We own a home at 539 North Laurel, directly across from the Nicholson Plan Unit Development. We thank the Planning Commission for your repeated thorough and united opposition to the Nicholas P U D via multiple denials when it was reviewed in 2015. In our opinion, several of you correctly identified this as a clear sidestep of our code by a developer threatening the city with legal action. We also thank you for your continued focus on what we see as Nicholson's failure to meet the approval conditions of the P U D and the city's failure to follow or enforce them. Unfortunately, this is, again, the topic I address. We know it bothers several of you when you think about this issue, but we are directly across the street and the reminders are constant. Since the final approval, we are experiencing the problems we foresaw, plus one that we did not. First, the living wall is clearly not what was promised by Nicholson. This ugly industrial-looking interlocking concrete, one hundred and twenty-five-foot-long, twelve-foot wall is a blight on our neighborhood and does not fit with the character. Nicholson promised, "You won't even be able to see it, it will be all green," that, in nine months. He was required to submit a signed agreement with a landscape professional prior to issuance of a permit. Instead, he submitted the city, and the city accepted, an unsigned estimate from a lawn mower who didn't even have a business license. The wall finally did get some sparse plantings, but what we see is mainly concrete. The city has the right to fix it, but we have not heard of any plans to do so. Second, our driveway was damaged multiple times by Nicholson's large trucks during demolition of the historic cottage, the building of the wall, and the installation of utilities. We thought approval condition number one addressed this, but after three months of asking, we were told that we were on our own to fix the damage. Third, and the most current issue is the new building on the northwest corner of the northwest block of the Plant Unit Development. We do not see how this building was approved, and here are some reasons why. One, the easement. The element of a third-party easement was never presented to the Planning Commission. The element of a third-party easement was not included in the packet provided to the public for the March first, 2016 City Council meeting. A letter was presented to City Council during the final hearing, March first, 2016, but the only hint of a third-party easement was buried on a, yet another final plat with a tiny sheet note. The format was eight, eight and a half by eleven and likely not readable. The format was eight and a half by 11 and likely not readable without magnification. We don't believe the change to add a plat sheet note disclosing the third-party easement was disclosed to the city council. The easement document itself was written prior to the planned unit development approval in November 2015, but was never presented or disclosed to PC or CC. It was never discussed during the deliberations because it was not disclosed. The Hardings were never mentioned in relation to the planned unit development. City council approved four houses, but we don't believe they approved a fifth building with foreign ownership because it was buried, not disclosed and not discussed. Then we have the shared access and maintenance agreement. This was allowed by the city instead of a homeowners association that was required in our code. The SAMA says that the common spaces are for the benefit of the PUD owners, not third parties. When it was recorded October 31st, 2016, the Hardings did not own any of the lots of the PUD. The SAMA also says benefited parties can't park in the common access easement area except on property they own. Another question is the process. The final approved plan repeatedly states it is four houses. It is indefensible to claim that an undisclosed fifth building does not constitute a major change from the final approved plan. Our code, and he cites the number, addresses this and requires such a change to be processed by the planning commission and the city council in order for building permits to be issued. The final approved plan shall control the issuance of building permits. Non-minor modifications shall be processed in the same manner as the original application and shall be subject to the same procedural requirements. A private-party easement agreement does not supersede Cannon Beach city ordinances for approval process. And then the questions about the building, this is a substantial structure. It is clearly 24 feet long. And then he gives some other statistics totaling 630 square feet. Then the question becomes, what is it? And he cites Mr. Adams several places, referring to it as an accessory structure. Accessory structures are defined in our code and are restricted by both height and total square feet. CBMC 1754-030A1 states the structure for building cannot be over 120 square feet in area. And then two lines down says that the building cannot exceed 12 feet in height. And the question is, why have other applicants been denied permits because their accessory structures would be too tall? But this one is approved at twice the allowed height and many multiples over the allowed square footage. The following have regard permits. How and why were permits issued for a 630-square-foot accessory structure when our code restricts these to 120? How and why were permits issued for a 24-foot accessory structure when our code restricts these to 12? Why does the permit filed with the county in May 2019 show the structure is a garage and studio? Why do the various mechanical and plumbing permits show the structure as garage and studio or new living unit above garage? What is the description on the permits given to contractors? Why does the building have heated floors, closed dryer, shower, toilet, sink, 100K BTU furnace? The next question regards the Geotech report. The Nicholson PUD approval condition number 15 states that a final Geotech site investigation report shall be prepared for each lot prior to the approval of building permits. Why was a Geotech report not required for the Harding's new structure? This site is a never-ending source of frustration and we are tired of it. Mr. Adams was correct in his April 19th email to Bill Kabaisman when he said, "I don't think we'll ever be out of the woods on this site." We continue to be gobsmacked as to why the city continues to work to accommodate desired stretches and bends of our code for this property while others are expected to follow the rules. The site has been a beehive of activity after the completion of the outside with several large trucks making deliveries, multiple visits by train, HVAC, A+ plumbing, and various other workers on a regular basis. This is certainly atypical for the inside of a garage that is supposed to be an un-habitable accessory structure. While we appreciate Mr. Adams revoking the livable space component of the original permit, we don't understand how the proper process for changes to the approved final plan of the PUD were not followed as per the code, or why the code restrictions for footprint and height of accessory structures in our code were not enforced, nor why the approval condition requiring a Geotech report was waived, and why there are no plans to make the living wall living and covered up with green. We have heard Ms. Kerr state that things like this destroy faith in government. We agree with her. We are reminded of, well, never mind that. Thank you for your continued attention to this matter. We hope you will do the right thing and vote to properly process this application request through planning commission as required by Ord. 174088, and enforce the condition that requires the living wall to be truly living and green. Maybe then you can begin to see a path out of the woods on this site.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, I can give you this for the record, and if you'd like, I could forward to you the PDFs so that you could let everybody have a copy.
I can just make copies.
You'll just make copies?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for good of the order?
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year. Where's your editor?